Yep, there's that header.
It's called order of our work session for today, three twenty-eight sixteen.
Lori?
Here.
Cappy?
Here.
Eric?
Here.
Chris?
Here.
Dennis?
Martin?
Here.
Brad?
Okay, our first order of business, one point three is to appoint Joey and Cassie as a joint board.
I would make that motion.
Second.
All right, been first and second. Ms. Proustman?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Hodges? Mr. Brueder?
Sure.
Ms. Stanford?
Yes.
Mr. Haggard?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Ms. Proustman?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Mr. Brueder?
Yes.
Ms. Stanford?
Yes.
Mr. Haggard?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay, item for discussion, Dr. Newhart, three point one.
Thank you. Three point one is the sixteen seventeen meet and confer recommendations with the certificated staff, teachers, professional staff. And the documentation, you see, under three point one, is our current policy, GCBDA and as well as GDBDA, proposed salary schedule for sixteen seventeen. Then you see a signed certificated salary agreement between our current negotiating representative body, which is MSTA, and a signed revised PTO agreement. And basically, with this approval tonight, in the regular session, particularly on the revised PTO agreement, it will then have to take that information from the agreement and apply it to those two board policies. And I would look to probably turn to Mr. Hatley to take that information from the agreement, put it into the policies, and then we will have to come back and approve those policies when that gets written into those two. Questions there, Chris?
Anyone have questions? I do, if you don't.
What's the?
Mr. Brueder?
I'll get to the actual stuff in, but I just wanted to try to get this so you can see the big picture. The first one is the salary schedule. That was discussed and agreed upon. It is recommending a twelve hundred dollar base increase to thirty-six-two. That is approximately, and Wes can talk more here in a second, is approximately, I believe, about a one point four million dollar increase to the budget. It also is designed to, in column one at BA, to cap out at ten steps or ten years. Okay? In other words, you'd have to be moved over or be frozen there. It also, in the agreement, allows for anybody ten years and over to be grandfathered in under the current salary schedule, which is to step nineteen, to remain there unless they move over. Approximately, how many staff members do we have there, Wes, in that category? Correct.
About three hundred people, but there's only sixty-five above the ten.
Correct.
Yeah, about sixty-five above the ten.
Then in column two, instead of that step nineteen, one additional step was given to step twenty. So in other words, it would go, column one, cap out at step ten, column two, cap out at step twenty, then column three on over would be at thirty-one years. And longevity step then is taken out as well, where the current salary schedule has that. And then all other steps in movement would be applied.
Can we see this bumped up against the current schedule? Can we see the new column one versus old column one, new column two versus old column two?
Can you pull the current schedule up there, Erin? You might have to flip back and forth.
Every step increased by a thousand two hundred and fourteen dollars.
So it's a linear, it's a linear step.
Yeah, everything, everything going across, it should increase by a thousand two hundred and fourteen dollars.
So there's no other changes other than the twelve hundred dollar index change?
Twelve hundred and fourteen, yeah, correct. We didn't do anything with steps at this time. That'll be something to do future years.
I saw in the agreement when I read that the teacher organization wanted to see the middle steps adjusted to meet other market values that are in the future.
That is something we're going to work on. Right now, we're just trying to face where we need to be.
Yes.
And the next step will be to adjust the steps.
With the. I just think that's important, that we recognize that that's something.
That is what our goal, I think that's what we left with.
Yeah, actually, at that meeting, we had discussed that, and it's probably going to be a several-step process, so I think everyone was on board with, the outcome is we need to get where we need to be, but I think it's going to take more than one year to get there. So I think that they were all completely fine with having multi-steps getting there.
Well, and with the indexing that we have now, that raise to that first one will raise everyone, but I guess there needs to be some finessing.
Yes.
We haven't always gotten that middle section very well done, so we need to look at that further each year.
By no means is this the salary schedule that you want to ultimately get to. Okay? The master's column has to be looked at. We need to continue ASAP on working on these things even prior to the school year being out for seventeen eighteen. You see the old schedule is up in front of you. The index is on the left, the amounts are on the right. You can see where column one goes to step nineteen, column two goes to step nineteen. If you look at the comparisons, most all the schedules have a maximum of ten in column one, upwards to twenty in column two. MSTA and people that were there were in agreement with those changes. But the biggest difference is making your adjustments in the steps and the beginning amount at your master's column. That's really what's got to be the next, in my opinion, order of business for seventeen eighteen.
It did increase the steps because they're percentage steps. Get back to the original schedule, you'll see the percentages. See the percentages on the left?
Yes.
Those are percentages based off the original, so it did increase as they went down.
Right, so it wasn't a flat.
No, it wasn't a flat, yeah, I'm sorry, I missed that.
Correct.
Oh, okay.
Because of your indexing.
Right, so the indexing actually did disproportionately scale those increases much more than twelve hundred bucks.
Correct. So it did adjust the steps to where they did get a larger rate. So somebody our first year is going to get twelve hundred, you know, a master's column is going to get about two thousand.
Okay, so let's pick one here.
So if you go to the masters all the way to the thirty-one, you're sixty-two, two oh five, the current proposal is sixty-four, three, sixty-four, so they're going to get us two thousand dollar rates.
How much?
Two thousand, twenty-one hundred dollars, roughly.
Right, because if I do step thirty compared from last year to this year, it's twenty-three thirty, yeah.
So three and a half percent.
If we could speak into the mic so people can hear.
Turn it off.
Or on video even.
I would like to say that there's no way you're going to get away from the disparities, the growth in the steps, as long as we do percentage raises.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that, I just want to make sure, I mean, if you're going to fix them, let's fix it. Why are we doing part of it now and part later? Fix it all now. I mean, that's, that would be my comment, what are we doing?
If you're looking at the master's column predominantly, it's a dollar increase in issue. You roughly have that three million dollars that you're looking at, you have support staff to address yet.
I understand, but our turnover problem is with teachers. Support staff's extremely important, but the turnover problem is with teachers. It was thirteen point eight percent of teachers, not thirteen point eight percent of support staff. Keep that in mind.
Wes, did you ever look at that master's column? You have the numbers there of how many teachers are on the master's column?
We have three hundred and forty-six. Three hundred and forty-six. Just on the masters, if you go masters all the way across, masters, doctorate and.
I just want to mention that.
Four hundred and sixty-seven.
A lot of the support staff were the folks that fell on the, below the minimums on that market study that we got, and those were also some places we wanted to take a
That's why we didn't look, though, at the, at the master's column, was our total dollars.
Any other questions?
About half your staff is not getting increases anyway because they're in the first two columns. You know, if they want to move across, then they would get a larger increase.
They'd be seeing the base increase.
Yeah, they basically see the base increase, but I mean, if you're talking about longevity, the people in the first two columns should be moving across. That's, you know, anyway.
But you'd want that anyway because you'd want them to get the further education.
Absolutely.
The master's right, so you want to grow them, right.
Is that the intentions of going from nineteen to ten? Is to make them grow faster?
It's to encourage that improvement, correct?
Encourage improvement, yeah, okay.
With this change, can we see how these stack up against the competitive markets? I mean, how do I know somebody at step twelve with a doctorate at fifty-six thousand, where they stand? I can't tell from this chart.
We did have a comparison on the base with, what, I believe, nine other schools, and the thirty-six-two, depending on what those schools do this year going into sixteen seventeen, but it brings us up to the bottom third with a twelve hundred dollar base increase. Out of those nine schools, yeah, if you have that, Wes.
I've got them right here, what did you say, Eric?
No, I'm saying, give us, give us.
Okay, step ten, Blue Springs is for a masters, if you're starting a masters column. Steps, steps, step ten is fifty thousand, three eighty-three at Blue Springs, fifty-one thousand, eight forty-four at Center, fifty thousand, four thirty-four at Independence, forty-seven thousand, nine sixty at KC Public Schools, forty-eight thousand, eight seventy-six at Lee Summit, forty-nine thousand, three fifty at Liberty, fifty-two, four thirteen at North Kansas City, fifty-three, seven forty-five at Park Hill, Platte City is forty-six, one thirty-five, Raymore is forty-three, one twenty-five, Raytown is fifty thousand, seven seventy-eight, and Smithville is forty-five, zero nine zero.
Can you take that over?
So we are in the bottom third of the competitive piece.
With our new salary schedule, we're going to be at.
You're ten percent below the high ones.
You're going to be at forty-six, six, sixty-two, correct.
And this is better than we've been before?
It has increased us. We're about halfway.
Those were all step ten that you?
Yeah, I read step ten, that's what I read.
But some of those districts, their contract have more school, more teacher days than, than ours.
That is correct.
So that can add a thousand, two thousand pretty quick that way.
Yeah, I mean, I think a lot of the districts were up to ten days more than we were.
Yes.
You want to go back and read those again, Wes?
Yes.
Well, we're at work, under the new proposal, we're taking it to forty-six, six, sixty-two.
The average is forty-eight, eight sixty-four.
Of all of them, or just the ones?
Uh-uh, that's all of them, that's all of them I read off, the average is forty-eight, eight sixty-four, so we're still a little below the average.
But when you look at, if there are ten extra days, and that does make a difference in the pay, it does.
That is true.
We're going to compare apples to apples. We'd have to break that down into a daily rate, is what we'd have to do. And then, and then you could compare, right?
Days, you want the days? Blue Springs, one eighty, see, we're one eighty-one, we're one seventy, one eighty-one, one seventy student days, one eighty-one contract day. Blue Springs is one seventy-five, one eighty-two, Center's one seventy-five, one eighty-five, Independence, one seventy-three, one eighty-five, KC Public Schools, one seventy-six, one eighty-four, Lee Summit's one eighty, one seventy-six, one eighty-four, Liberty's one seventy-four, one eighty-three, North Kansas City's one seventy-seven, one eighty-six, Park Hill's one seventy-four, one eighty-eight, Platte County's one seventy-six, one eighty, Raymore is one seventy-two, one eighty-three, Raytown's one seventy-four, one eighty-four, and Smithville's one seventy-five, one eighty-four. I guess there's not as many days as what I anticipated.
Probably about an average of anywhere from.
About one eighty-four, one eighty-five. They're about three days more than what we are.
Mr. Haggard, do you have any questions?
No, I'm good.
The next item that, that was delved into greatly was the PTO, paid time off, agreement. And basically, in looking at this, it's moving from the current sick leave, personal days of three and nine, and taking it to just strictly paid time off to where you could use any number of personal days or any number of sick leave days. It's not a designated number within that, that scope of, for nine-month employees, is twelve, ten-month, thirteen, eleven-month plus fourteen. And the carryover max was what was finally agreed upon at ten, eleven, and twelve. So in other words, teachers, nine-month employees, would have basically two days to use them or lose them. The leave max total was decreased from two twenty-five to one ten. That does not include the current year of what you'd be employed in, so you'd get that additional twelve, carryover ten, so theoretically, you could be paid out for one hundred and twenty days if you did not use all your days in that current year. And then the payout was on a graduated scale to reward years of service and loyalty and expertise and professionalism in district for one to five years at ten dollars, all the way up to twenty-six plus years at one hundred dollars. So in theory, if a employee did not use their days and build up a hundred and ten plus their current year's days, and had twenty-five plus years in the district and retired, they could walk away with a twelve thousand dollar paycheck. That's significantly more than the current amount of twenty dollars per day at the two hundred and twenty-five days accumulated, or roughly that four thousand dollar paycheck. So there is an incentive to stay, there's an incentive to not to use days, and there's also the ability to, to use your days, though, however you want to use them, under the current reasons for personal leave and sick leave. Also, changes made, we're in bereavement. Instead of bereavement counting against your personal leave, it's all outside of that, five days, or upwards to five days. And then also maternity leave was also addressed in regards to coinciding with FMLA and using your available PTO days. Amy, do you have anything else to add here?
I just wanted to add a couple of things to going back just a minute to the PTO days. We did keep a lot of the same information on the reasons for the use of that leave, and those are included in your information here as well. So we took kind of what the current policy states as far as personal and sick days and combined those, and you can use it for any of those purposes. We did put some restrictions, I guess you call them restrictions a little bit, with regard to the approval process. For the, the normal days and paid time off per the reasons listed on the guidelines, those just go through the principle for approval. However, there are some, some periods of time where we do want to ensure that we get the majority of our teachers in, in the rooms. And so we listed out some information, you know, it states, "The following times employees are encouraged to be in attendance," that's how it starts. And there's the first five student days, the last five student days of the year, working days before, and working days after a school holiday, and then days that are designated for staff professional development. We felt those were really important days, they're all important, but we felt that those were extremely important for the staff to be in attendance. They have to go through a different chain of approval. They still go through their principal for approval, but it also goes to HR to make sure that we're being consistent across the board with the approvals of those types of leaves. With the bereavement, I think it's pretty straightforward with regard to the immediate family member definition, that is taken straight out of board policy, so that did not change. And then the maternity leave, there just were some concerns about being able to use for birth of a child, the full amount of leave and use your PTO or your personal and sick days for that. So I just wanted to clarify those few issues.
There was a lot of back and forth on this PTO policy or agreement. It's a better policy, once it gets in, it transfers over, than what you currently have today for staff, there's no doubt about that. Is it perfect? No, it's not. Can it continually be tweaked? Yes, it can. But at this point in time, I think it's a very good policy to move forward, or agreement to move forward with.
I have a question. What's the concern about the higher payouts? I mean, is, are we changing a budget item for that? I mean, this.
There's a cost. In, in theory, the cost to pay a sub for teachers, now, everybody doesn't get a sub throughout the district. You know, nobody gets a sub for me, or many maintenance positions, those types of things, but for teachers, you're trading that, that payout for a cost of a sub versus giving them back from teachers for not using days.
And I specifically was looking, I'm sorry, at the payout for sick days?
The, the number of days?
Right, right. I mean, if, if we're looking at now, it could max at four thousand, and now with the new policy, it could be twelve thousand, that would seem to change our budget.
The, people will be grandfathered in with their days above a hundred and twenty, okay? So they're not going to lose those days, and if they would leave, they would also be paid those days above the one twenty that, under the current policy rate of twenty dollars. I guess, I don't know if I'm fully understanding your question, Chris?
Well, my question is, is this could be a costly change for us. That's my, my question is, I don't know the numbers, I don't know, do we foresee that we're, we will have many teachers that will, and isn't it at retirement that they get those, those days?
Correct.
It's not, it's not at leaving, it's at retiring.
They would be paid out for their current year's leave at that rate if they left the district, but they would only be paid out that lump sum amount for accumulated days if they retired in district in years. In any given year, you're right, Chris, that's, that's going to be hard to determine, okay? Depending on how many people retire. Currently, we have, if this would do occur today, and we had this policy in place, we have, what, twenty-three retirees? So, so it's roughly, say, quarter of a million dollars, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that payout. But it's also an attempt to help retain teachers.
Absolutely.
And we're spending the money training them, those types of things, and it's a, it's a good incentive for teachers at least to stop and think, maybe about leaving or not, whether it's a final decision in that, that's hard to tell, but it should be a good attempt for retention of teachers. Brad, do you have any?
No, no, thank you.
Three point two. If you recall, at the March fifth board meeting, I had a skeleton plan that I would put together a little bit more in-depth and work on for this meeting. I do not have, this isn't a regular session, but it's just here in work session, to show you what I want to begin working towards. And many things we have to start doing ASAP because of timelines and getting things in place, not only for this coming fall, but also by seventeen eighteen. But it's basically a St. Joe School District all-in plan, and the plan is termed that because it's going to take everybody to be working together to see these things happen. And more importantly, it had to deal with attendance. If we would just increase our attendance to ninety percent of the students attending ninety percent of the time, that could potentially increase dollars through the foundation formula by minimally at least a million. Now, obviously, that's a floating amount because you never know what the legislators are going to end up doing and funding the formula, those types of things. But we have got to get a, a, a higher attendance rate, just one, to improve academic performance, but also to, to communicate to the parents that it also affects our, our dollars that we receive through the foundation formula. And our lower attendance rates are occurring at the high school, and if we can just do something to provide an incentive, and I did have the principals, curriculum coordinators, instructional coaches take a look at this, and they did submit an APR plan, and we want to work with this plan, I think there's things that we got to still take a more in-depth look with, but how, the semester tests tie into incentives for the high school. You used to have in the district where, if they were perfect attendance, for instance, they didn't have to come to school. Well, it's not that you have to do that, but at least maybe they have the ability to opt out with perfect attendance. There's got to be some type of reward for those students, all up and down the line, whether you're an A student or a D student even, for some type of reward incentive to maybe the semester tel, the semester test will only help you, but not hurt you even. Those are the types of things I want to take a look at in regards to that. I'd like to also begin developing a school improvement format. We've got to do a better job to where curriculum, instruction, professional development, everything from block scheduling to attendance, all these things, how they all interreact and affect each other. And most districts will have some type of district improvement team. They'll even have building level improvement teams, to where you're trying to coordinate all this through the efforts of through these teams. How this will all look, I think that's got to be a work in progress. But again, it's it's to develop goals and objectives, SMART goals, to to improve literacy at each grade level. You know, I know third grade is a very important year for students. They need to be, you know, our goal needs to be to where everybody's reading at grade level by third grade, let alone probably everybody reading at grade level at each grade level. How are we going to get there? That's what these improvement teams need need to work at and develop. Whereas there's a non-negotiable, heard that term many times today through interviews, but they're right, non-negotiable basics being done throughout each building. Each building is not the same, though. There needs to be some variations, and there need to be allowed for those variations. But at least there needs to be a a basic, non-negotiable philosophy and approach being taken with literacy and attendance both. Also, a better focus on our college and career readiness on your APR scores, 1, 3, and 4. We need to be scoring higher than what we're currently scoring on our ACT tests. How that plan would look and how that would be developed, I think it's got to start as early as particularly seventh grade. We need to get the kids focused, and we need to get a better understanding how we can improve those ACT scores, as well as our COMPASS and our ASVAB scores. Basically, currently, right now, they take the highest score of the three and apply it to your APR. And the question would be whether or not we want to have every student take all three, just to throw that out. Also, whether or not we want to have maybe our freshmen, sophomore, it used to be the plan test, the ACT did away with it, they're coming back with a revised pre-test for ACT. And I would highly suggest potentially that the St. Joe's School District looks at funding that that pre-test even. So all these things need to be looked at and delved into, but all are part of this all-in plan. The last piece is is graduation rate. Improving the graduation rate for college and career readiness. And it's not that everybody goes to college, but it's getting everybody prepared to to enter into a endeavor or area that they want to go into. We've got to get 100% kids placed, not 90%, not 95, 100%. That needs to be our goal. Whether or not we ever reach that, if you don't set it, you'll never reach it. But let's set that 100% goal of college and career placement. We also need to look at the number of graduation requirements that we're currently offering with an eight block or the four block, but basically able to obtain eight credits a year. We're still currently at the 25. And when we went to that eight block, that percentage did not increase. And sometimes I think our expectations are too low. Let's increase that expectations, take a look at even differentiated diplomas, and increase those graduation requirements. It's not that you can't get still kids graduated, but at least they're not going to be able to slough off for seven credits out of the year or out of their four-year career and not be concerned about graduating. How that would look, again, that is something that needs to be developed. But this is the start of what I would term St. Joe's School District All-In. Questions?
I applaud you for bringing this to the board. It's it's good to be at a place where we are actually having conversations about doing this. I mean, I know everyone's looking and working on it, but it's good to have a discussion out in this forum.
The attendance piece could be in place for this coming fall. We could have an attendance incentive piece in place. Some of these other things like block scheduling, those types of things, graduation requirements, they need to be taken in more in-depth look at, but I would definitely try to to have something in place by 17, 18. If you change the schedules at the high schools, you better have something decided by December at the latest, really earlier this fall, so that the high schools would have a chance to change those schedules, take a look at them as it affects, you know, kids that are already going to be a senior or sophomore or whatever, and how it plans out and plays out for their four-year career.
I have one, Dr. Newhart. This all-in plan, is this developed, who all were involved in developing this plan? Is this your plan that you're you're?
The idea, you know, right now, as I'm proposing, is ideas. And then I would like to get the staff involved in developing it.
So this is just like a guideline?
Correct.
Outlined?
Correct.
I just think it's will be imperative to make sure we have as much staff input as possible and to at least help the transition be smoother, they know it's coming, you know? Okay, thank you. Okay, no questions?
Item 3.3, middle school and high school enrollment reports. Tim Ellis?
I think at one of the previous meetings, you, we have been asked to pull a report to show enrollment across the high schools and middle schools. And Cassie has a paper copy that's maybe a little easier to read than what was in the PDF format. So what we did was to pull an export of all the sections across the middle and high schools and then put together a report that shows how many students are enrolled in each course, how many sections of that course are offered at the school, and then it will give you an average of what's offered, or excuse me, the average course enrollment. Then the other piece that you need to kind of follow up with is a co-section report. At the high school level and even at the middle school level, some of those courses are offered as co-sections, which means there's two sections of a class or a course being taught at the same time by the teacher. An example would be in in some of your foreign language courses, you may have Latin III and Latin IV being taught at the same time. So the the sections will show as a co-section. And so you can see across that report that I tried to tag every course that at least one of the sections has been offered as a co-section. So any of those that have the little ampersand sign mean that the that course, at least one of those courses, one of the sections is is co-taught at another time. And then there's a separate report following all those that will show you the 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 co-sections that are shown there. I know it's a lot to kind of digest, but there's a copy for each school, four at the middle school, then three at the high school, and then a report for the co-sections at each of those schools.
Tim, I have a question. This is hard for me to look at because I haven't looked at this kind of thing before, but I I like being able to do so. On central high schools listing, the, there's all kinds of, they will have A and B listed, and then you'll have B total and A total, and I'm not sure what all that is.
The classes at the high school and middle school are taught on a block period. So there's an A day and a B day. Typically, the A day is your color day, so it's a red day at Benton, white day. Central would be blue, white, Lafayette's white, or excuse me, green, white. And so the A day is the color day, so I can't specify, well, I could, I guess, for the schools. But the A day is the color day, and then the B day is a white day. And if you see, a lot of the special ed classes are designated with an A, B, C, or D. And so if you see a a class name with an A? It's it's, that's a special ed section. And then the ELL and ESOL typically in the in the course name, there's a designation as ELL or ESOL. And then an asterisk in front of the name indicates that that's an honors program.
How can we get our arms around the co-section piece? Because you can't made up. I mean, I'm looking at some of these classes with one student in them, and I know they're a co-section part of another one, but I can't tell whether that's being taught if there's eight students in there total, or how do we get our arms around that?
Here's here's the central co-sections that are listed. So at the top, you can see in that example, school publishing, honor, school publishing 2 is taught at the same time with the foundations and art. So you can see it's period four, and then it's the A day, which would be the color day. So there's one student in the school publishing 2, and then the foundation and art has 20, and then the total for that course and period would be 21.
So it's a way to offer a class where there's not enough kids to have a whole separate class, and you just have to be in with another one?
The principals or the counselors will work out the details of how many students are typically going to be in a section. And if they feel the need to combine those sections, then they put the sections together, and and it's offered as a co-section.
Well, I noticed that happens a lot with higher level foreign language classes.
Yes.
You know, if somebody wants to take French III, and there's not that many kids that take French III, but they're able to do so and do the curriculum for French III, be in a French class, speaking French with the other students. I think that's a useful way to do it in in that particular instance.
It's not untypical, but I don't know if it's good for teaching because that teacher is having two preps in the same hour. So you're still teaching two different subjects within the same period. But you're also trying to create as many course offerings as you can to help meet student needs.
How does somebody, for example, like digital electronics, one person in 2B, and in the same co-section, there is 17 students with principles of engineering? How does that get worked?
I'd have to defer that question to Sandy. I don't know if Sandy, if you want?
Yeah, but I mean, they're not even remotely the same.
They have to differentiate. I'm assuming they get the majority of the class going, and then it's more of an independent study with that other student in that course.
Eric, are you talking about that this one is a project lead the way? Both of those are designated?
Yeah, yeah, that's exactly what I'm talking about.
So there's one student in project lead the way, digital electronics, and then 17 students in the principal.
That's what I'm talking about.
Well, the other thing with project lead the way teachers is somebody has to be, the teacher has to be certified in that particular class. So not every teacher can even teach those particular ones. So that teacher can teach both of those, and that's one of the reasons that that kid should be in a class where that teacher is.
I had a question about all of the weightlifting. It seemed like Central and was it Lafayette that had a lot of those weightlifting classes? But for some, I couldn't find the ones for for Benton. But it did seem like Central was really heavily weighted with those.
They're typically listed as beginning or advanced weight training. And there's an example at at Central of where they're combined. You have advanced weight training with beginning weight training. So they're taught at the same time by the same teacher.
I just thought that was an awful lot of weightlifting classes that we were providing. I just found it odd, I guess.
Science investigations just has three students in Central?
Which school?
At Central High School, it's under TAG.
Talented and gifted would be.
No, Central?
Is it being taught, co-taught?
Co-ta, um...
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said, which one?
Well, it's it's the Central, it's it's in a combined class, but there's one student in grade 10, one student in grade 12, and one student in grade nine. I mean, one teacher for three students, am I missing?
Let me look at, if you go back to the Central, it'd be on this one, the Central Talented and Gifted, I'll have to find it. Second page? Talented and Gifted, Science Investigation, 10, 12, and 9, looks like a total of three. Now, that's, those would be co-taught at the same time.
What about these community training classes at Benton? Same question there, you've got three students in a class?
Those are special ed courses.
Oh, okay.
Really, what you're, want to make sure, and I think this is your question, is to get the right courses, making sure we're having the right numbers to offer a course, and how this all ties in to to teacher-student ratios. Is that a fair assessment?
Yes.
Well, when I look at like biology, just non-honors biology, and I look at the average at Benton, it's 18. At Central, it's 23. And at Lafayette, it's 14.71, it's 15. I mean, that's that's quite a spread between Lafayette and Central in the average enrollment in an end-of-course class. Those...
Yeah, again, we work with the the counselors and the principals when we do the registration, and they they make those balance, they balance those as we roll the master schedule forward. And you you've done that, so I understand.
I think this ties in too to your your block scheduling issue. Because when you had a seven-period day and a teacher was having a planned period and teaching six to seven, okay? That it did not change when you went to an eight or four block, eight, four blocks each day, a teacher is still only teaching six to seven. They still get a block every day planned. Now, some teachers don't, they're being paid extra for no plan. As you can see, too, some teachers are being asked to to teach, you know, more than one class in a period. But as as a whole, under a seven-period day, a teacher was teaching six to seven, and under the eight block, they're teaching six of eight. So you really didn't increase the opportunity for for course offerings there when you went to the block scheduling. That's one of the things I really need to think we need to take a look at when we talk about block scheduling.
And in that long-range plan, that's basically what you're saying?
Correct. That would be one of the things we'd want to try to address. Again, course offerings is important, dual-credit offerings, advanced placement offerings. You're trying to make sure you're meeting student needs with it.
Good information.
Can I ask a question about that?
Certainly.
Who makes the decision on what classes are going to be offered and which ones are not?
The principal at the school. We work with the principals, and if they need to add another section or combine sections, then we work with them in the springtime. We'll be working on them between, well, here now and throughout the summer before we roll the schedule.
So how many kids do we have to have in a subject that, before we decide that that one's not going to be offered anymore?
Naturally, I think up to the principals. I don't know, Sandy has, certain courses probably have different requirements on what they need. Some of the some of the honors courses, I believe, have a lower requirement. Some of the, some of the honors courses, I believe, have a lower requirement, especially, some of the special programs, gifted and talented maybe have some smaller amounts that they allow students to take with a smaller class size.
So what about just regular elective classes?
Sandy, I don't know if you can answer that or not.
Usually, an HR function as far as enrollments for students to staff, but ultimately, it's up to the principal, sorry, ultimately, it's up to the principal and department chairs to designate exactly what sections they want to offer and how they want to utilize their staff throughout the year. High school scheduling, if you don't know, is very complex. There's a lot of courses, there's a lot of students, and a lot of times, students have to go in and put in requests to help build the schedule. And, as you know, then there's several course changes at the beginning of the year. And so what you set your schedule at, it's hard to eliminate a section of ten students a week or two into school. They do the best they can with the projections of their numbers and their requests to have, to reduce the class sizes. They definitely utilize all their staff any way they possibly can to help those class numbers remain small. But we also have to remember, too, that some courses, you have to be certified to teach in certain areas. So if you have, if you only have enough students for six sections, they can't just teach six, I mean, they have to teach another section of it. And so that also plays a factor in it as well. So only certain teachers can, are certified to teach certain areas. So that, that plays into student requests, and if you don't have as many requests in one area as you do the other, you still have to have a full FTE to offer those courses.
Do we have the historical teacher counts at each of the three high schools for the last five years? Can you provide that to the board?
I'm just curious to see, I mean, if each principal's controlling their own destiny, are they determining if and when they need a teacher, don't need a teacher? Got too many teachers, got too few teachers?
Yes. Right now, they fill out a justification form that goes through HR, as in class numbers, and why they feel like they need additional staff member. So they themselves don't just decide, I want another staff member. There's a process in which they go through to get that extra staff member.
Part of the process right now is to put in class requests. Students are putting in a request for next-year schedule, so we know how many students have requested a certain subject class, and then we work with the principals to figure out how many sections will be available, and then they will request if they need additional classroom teachers. So there, there is a process to it that, that we work on now throughout the summer, and even, even when, when school starts in the fall, to make sure that those kids don't change their mind as they show up for registration in August.
Dr. Newhart, you talked about increasing graduation rates and requirements. What does that, just off the top of your head, what does that look like?
Basically, when you went to an eight-period day or an eight-block schedule, that increased the opportunities to thirty-two credits total, eight credits a year over your four years, you would increase that potentially, say, to a minimum of twenty-seven or twenty-eight. You could even look at it, differentiate diploma, to where you could still have minimum requirement and then a maximum requirement for thirty-two, for, say, a gold diploma, if that's what you want to determine. And it would give students abilities, you'd still have your basic requirements that would have to be met, but it would give really students more ability to take more elective courses, and hopefully in subject areas or areas that they wanted to go into or an interest that they had. It would require them to be there all four years, more importantly, pass classes if you increase those requirements, to where currently, they're, you can still graduate and not pass seven, seven classes, is how it's currently set up. So your hopes is to increase the expectation, but do it in a way that also helps kids to move into an area and get them more expertise potentially in an area or class that would help them to be college and career-ready. It could be, one other quick point, it's as simple as our, our math course sequence. Taking a look at it as well. Do not like to necessarily use the word tracking, but we, we currently have an issue of the number of, of Algebra I students not passing at our freshman level, potentially creating a, a lower math class, or maybe even doing something different in or something eighth grade, to where that inability to be successful, or where we're currently having issues in areas with, you create a more successful track for these students.
Both Savannah High School and Park Hill High School have graduation requirement, twenty-eight for graduation requirements, just three more than what we have.
Do you know, do you know, Fan, what their graduation rates are? Are they higher or lower than ours?
I would, I would guess Park Hill's is higher than ours.
Did you say Park Hill?
Park Hill, right. And Savannah's the other one.
Savannah, that's what I just heard.
I don't know, I don't know. And really, it isn't that they added anything, except they added more electives, so, so that's, that's the, you bumped up the, I mean, from what I can see.
It, it really would be designed, Martin, to, to help kids. Even though the, the requirement to graduate number of credits increases, a lot of people take a look at that and say, oh, you've increased the expectation. Well, yes, you have, but it's designed to create opportunities for kids to, to get to where they want to go, to be more successful.
We'd also have to create some electives that kids would want to take.
Correct.
That's the key.
That is.
You have to, they have to want to be there to come, so.
It's engaging them.
That's what I was getting.
Yeah. Well, you're right on, you're right on par for that.
Thank you, Tim. Three point four overtime report, Wes.
I got a bunch of questions on this.
We didn't expect any differently.
Do you want me to start?
Just go.
Okay. Just a quick question. I mean, who, who's responsible for monitoring the overtime within each building or section or area? For example, like, who monitors the overtime from the transportation group? Okay, how do you manage that? And why do bus drivers have twenty-two thousand dollars worth of overtime?
Because we've had a lot of bus drivers that have been out for medical reasons, and so we only have so many bus drivers that can drive, so they have to drive extra to meet our needs, getting our kids to and from school.
So they run an extra route? I mean, what do you mean they drive extra? Because they have a route, they go. I mean, how do they-
They do other things besides just drive buses.
Like what?
They do gate duties, they do some paras, some, they do other duties besides just drive the buses, some of the bus drivers do, because I had the same question.
For our sped drivers?
For, for these bus drivers that are listed on this, on the transportation, there are some other ones that do other things besides just drive a bus.
I do know this year, we've had quite a few drivers that have been not able to drive because of, of health reasons. Our surgeries have been off, and so a lot of our drivers have been having to drive extra times, yes, to get, to get the kids.
Well, my concern is that overtime should be the exception, not the rule in any organization, but especially in the school system where it's public funds that are funding the, the payments. But, I mean, a hundred and fifty-eight thousand of overtime here, there's another thirty-seven thousand dollars worth of comp time that hasn't been paid out yet, and that doesn't include another almost three thousand hours of overtime that's still yet to be paid. So, I mean, you're talking about two hundred and fifty or three hundred thousand dollars worth of overtime, and it's focused in a couple areas. Transportation, Central High School, believe it or not, has eight times the amount of overtime as Lafayette. Somebody explain that to me. Superintendent's office. Okay, thirteen grand of overtime. Business office, you're the worst company, my friend. That thirty-seven thousand of overtime. And I know you were shorthanded, I know you were shorthanded, but overtime's got to be the exception, not the rule. I mean, it's got to be managed. If nobody's managing it, you're going to pay a lot of overtime. And these are dollars that could be spent elsewhere in the district versus overtime. Just my comments.
I can speak directly to the superintendent's office, obviously. The amount of work that we've had over the course of the last eight months with the issues going on, and to, to get things accomplished, and then with the absence of Debbie Consol has required additional hours to get those things done. And that's what I would also suggest, especially if you look at the state audit report, when they addressed overtime hours, e- either we're not being efficient in what we're doing, or maybe we don't have enough staff even in place to get what we need to get done.
Or nobody's managing the overtime, which is the case in most organizations, and you pay out a lot of money for no reason. Take it for what it's worth, I've seen it a million times.
Well, again, from the superintendent's office standpoint, and I think there are some other department standpoints, you want to get the work done in a quality, quality I think it's something to keep in mind, and the state auditor report does address that to, to take a look at that as well.
I have no problem if you make a proposal to add FTEs, and the overall compensation goes way down accordingly. All you got to do is look at the hours, but many of these, I don't understand why Central High School has eight times the amount of overtime as Lafayette High School. Eight times. Makes no sense.
Was that in the area of maintenance?
It's all over. Maintenance, food service. Maintenance and food service mostly. A lot of the secretaries haven't been paid out yet, so that didn't show up.
Food service, custodian, food service, custodian, food service.
There's a lot of overtime in food service.
Food service, food service.
Wes, help me understand something here. When somebody does, specifically a support staff worker or a wage worker, that does, say, gate duty, that, that is paid, that is paid at their wage rate as overtime?
Gate duty's paid at a certain rate. As soon as it throws them into overtime, then we have to do what we call a blended rate, whichever rate, we have to average their, their normal rate plus the extra duty rate to pay an average rate. It's a little bit complicated how we do it, but yeah, if you've got support staff doing gate duty, they're always in overtime, and some of them do a lot of gate duty. So anytime they do anything outside of their normal job, it's overtime. So we're either paying them or we're paying somebody else. I mean, we got to pay somebody to do it.
But the late would be, the rate would be less if it was a certificated staff person?
Correct. There would be no overtime. So if we paid them twenty-five dollars for doing gate duty, they'd get twenty-five dollars. An hourly person, if it's, I think it's fifteen dollars a rate, I'm not sure what it is. You know what it is, Owen? No, off the top of my head, I don't know what the rate is. But if it's fifteen dollars, and their normal job's twenty dollars, then you got to blend the rate, so it actually comes out to more than the fifteen dollars an hour because it's all overtime.
And then that's governed by-
That's wage and hour.
Wage and hour, IRS.
Point is, it needs to be managed. Somebody should be responsible and report on it on a monthly basis to you and your, and your staff meetings. I mean, it shouldn't come to a board meeting, it should, but, I mean, this is the very last.
We, we are going to start managing it as the time clock, we're starting in April. They're coming, the week of the eighteenth of April to start the implementation of the time clock system. It will be managed more efficiently because there'll be notifications to supervisors on a daily basis if they have overtime in their departments.
It does require today, implemented day one, supervisor approval before overtime is even allowed. So since, since July one, that has been a requirement for supervisor approval before overtime is allowed.
So you think all the supervisors understand that when somebody works the gate at a football game, that that's going to count on their overtime and do this blended rate and stuff?
I don't know if that is fully understood, that was my point to Cap.
That sounded like a, kind of a, I wouldn't have guessed that if I was doing that. So, you know, if a lot of this overtime ends up being that kind of thing, because Wes said a lot of folks, I mean, that's a way for them to make some more money, I can understand why they'd want to. That could end up being a lot of money, we just didn't realize.
And, and many times, buildings search for those types of, of workers, for gate workers.
We'll have this from now on, right? Monthly, every month?
We're looking at a monthly report, and ultimately, when time clock gets fully implemented, it'll be a, currently, right now, you're seeing a variation of those reports, because they're all pulled from different places, and when time clock gets fully implemented, we'll be able to pull that from one source.
With comparatives, so we can see prior periods' amounts, so it's not just a number in a vacuum, right?
Well, otherwise, the longer you go, obviously, with time clock plus, the better comparatives you'll get.
We'll be able to compare this year to last year, because we paid out all comp time last year. So we'll, you, you should have pretty close numbers to compare it to. And we will pay out all comp time at the end of this year also.
Brad's back online?
Brad's back. I'm back, sorry about that.
So with all of the custodians, if there's all of the overtime for that, is that because we have a shortage of custodians? Because I know at one point, we, I mean, we hadn't filled several positions, so is that what this is?
Chris, you want to help address that?
I think that's a large part of it. I mean, it has, to date, we barely have filled about twenty Husky positions, so I'm sure we have staff that are working overtime.
Is there situations where, like, if somebody's sick and you don't have a sub, then a regular person has to go over and?
Yeah, we have, we have others that cover. Sometimes we have folks even in the grounds department that we need to go cover. They will have to go cover.
Chris, what's your current custodian count? Hundred and six?
No, it's not that high.
Well, that's what it was, last personnel report, so.
I'd have to look, because we've got several. Several.
I've seen those on a personal-
I think we have seven more.
The one that's made this comp time, that is a list of all of his major courses, including warehouse. But that's a complete list of this department. I got that from, you're probably-
Do we have any more questions?
No.
Okay. Let's move on to three point five.
Bids for surplus Apple equipment, Tim McKay?
As you see, these were the, the bids that we got back on, the surplus equipment that we put out for bid. Most of these items were the items that were from the teacher replacement last year, or beginning of this year, I guess I should say, and then the iPads that we pulled out of the middle schools, and we put the Chromebooks in over the summer. So all that went out for auction, and we had, we had quite a, quite a good turnout as far as that's concerned on the amount of bids, and we had diamond assets came in at three hundred and eighty-two thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars for what we currently have in the warehouse to provide.
So that cleans off the shelves?
Right now, it does, but we still got some more stuff. We still got stuff that we're trying to, to get through and, and get out. We've got some teacher that we're trying to clean up from the beginning of the year that we missed and stuff like that. Not, not a ton, but this is the majority. We had, like, I believe, eight hundred and fifty-one MacBook Pros, which were teachers, and then eleven hundred, or eleven hundred and something on the iPads, so, and then some miscellaneous stuffs that we had put together just to try and get rid of it, get some value. There was some value in there, some stuff had some good value, other things did not, so, but it was much better than trying to do an open auction where we probably would have got pennies on the dollars. Where here, we're getting substantial amount of dollars that we can put back into our budget to help keep that going, instead of every year having to not have any money there.
Yeah.
Jim, explain the, what's the three, three options here on this one guy? What's, what's that about?
The company had three different options on how they, they bid it out.
That was, the company had three different options on how they, they bid it out, and we just wanted to make it transparent on the, on the process. And when we vetted all this through, obviously, they weren't even close to what Diamond gave us on that. I'd have to go back and pull the bids to, to tell you exactly what those options were, but I, I don't recall.
There's a, there's a pretty wide discrepancy here. Why is that?
There was, there was, yeah.
Do you know why that is?
I, I don't. Some of these companies may not be as reputable as Diamond. Diamond Assets and Power On Services are, they're, they're pretty much a, a vendor that works with Apple on asset relocation, stuff like that. So I think they have a better feel for what the value of that is and what they can turn it over and get, get out of it.
What about Cal State? They're at 359.
Cal State, they, they submitted a bid, but they did not give us much documentation on where it was gonna go, data wiping of the, of the machines versus the ISO standards that, that are out there. So we're guaranteed from Diamond Assets, they'll come in, they're gonna do an inventory for us, they're gonna package it, palletize it, they'll ship it off, and then we'll get a report back later on all of the asset tags, all the serial numbers of the units and the totals that were taken from us. So we'll also have that. And Cal State did not give us any of that information at all. And that was why we, Roy and I kind of vetted through this. And we did have some extra questions from a couple of the vendors, the top three, and we got those answered. And that's why we still are picking Diamond Assets as they meet all the needs and to make sure that it's, it's a quality company that's gonna take care of this.
Any questions?
This is, yeah, this isn't a consent agenda item, cause our recommendation is to accept the high bid of Diamond Assets for surplus property for 382,665.
What are the payment terms?
Check upon delivery. Or cashier, cashier's check, or electronic deposit, I believe, too.
Right.
Any more questions? Okay, let's go to 3, 3.6.
Audiovisual computer equipment, Tim?
This is our annual bid that we, that we put out for supplies like toner cartridges, batteries, and some other things for the classroom. We've substantially cut this compared to previous years, just because of some inefficiencies. We're, we're trying to improve those, especially with like, the copier bid, we're continually pulling out those onesie-twosie printers and pushing everyone to the multi-function printers that are cheaper to manage, and they do a much better job, print front and back and staple and correlate. And we've also pushed a couple items down to the, the print shop, like, for instance, grade cards that were due at, at, at the midpoint. Lafayette, for instance, we took that and pushed those down to JR and the print shop. That way he could print them much quicker, and then also, the way they fold them, he could do that. I mean, they've got very nice equipment down there to do that stuff. So that kinda save, save time for the staff also. And all they had to do was stuff the envelopes, and I believe that Lafayette had students do that for them.
When are the bids due, Tim?
We haven't, we left that open on the AV bid, just because we weren't sure yet, but as soon as this, we'll, we'll advertise this for the normal two weeks like were required by board policy. So once that comes back, then we'll go through those bids and then we'll bring it back to the board for approval.
So you're still not looking at this for board approval until the 25th?
Correct.
On actually accepting any bids of April?
We could wait that long, it'd be nice if we could get it quicker, if, if that's a possibility, that way.
That would be your quickest turnaround time for board approval.
Yeah. It's just equipment that we, you know, like to get here before summer, because some of this is gonna require our summer project, and then supplies.
So really, you're, you're not obtaining bids until the week of, what, April 11th?
Yeah, we'll put these, we'll, we'll get this put out as soon as possible, and then we'll get the bids back and then bring it to the board for approval.
Okay, any questions? Okay, 3.7.
Chris?
So as the board may remember, part of the Advanced Science Research Center addition that the city had asked us to put in sidewalks and trees, which we'd already put out to bid, and then I believe that Dr. Newhart had a conversation with the city manager, Bruce Woody. And the result of that conversation is a waiver from putting in the sidewalks and trees. The city's, or the letter is attached, you know, they do request that we look at possibly doing some sidewalk work later, that would be something that would service a bus delivery drop-off point to the school, which we will look at later. But, but the, but the project itself, they waived it this time.
I do believe ultimately there do need to be sidewalks, but at this particular point in time, it's not a requirement.
Good work. Okay, any questions, comments? 3.8.
This is an interesting one. Joey?
You're gonna have to scooch. We were approached by a company in Los Angeles to use Noise School as the location for a film. He is Levi Smock, he went to school here, he was born and raised here, he's now a producer in Los Angeles. And this film is for the pre-teen teen market. We did read the script, it's a ghost story, and they felt that Noise was the perfect location for the film. We went back and forth with them as far as what exactly they needed. They need the location for eight days in April, and for 13 hours a day, and so we came up with a cost of $1,500 a day for them to use Noise. We will provide a custodian for them. And the film is set to release in October. It will be released on iTunes first, and then Netflix, Hulu, Disney, and Nickelodeon. So Joe Hatley has been involved in drafting the contract. And so we're looking for an approval tonight because the location film shoot is coming up within about 14 days.
Is Mr. Hatley here? Did you run into anything that we need to be on guard for? I mean, I know you did your due diligence, but.
No, I, I think we have it covered in this. I will say that I'd not done an agreement like this before, it's pretty unusual, but we subscribe to a service that has some pretty comprehensive form agreements. And as it happens, I happen to have one of our partners in one of our other offices, who's a screenwriter, and talked to her a little bit about it as well. But I'm pretty confident, this, this service we use for agreements like this, very comprehensive. And then I looked at other location agreements for, that you can find, and believe this, this actually is pretty comprehensive compared to some you'll see, which are a couple pages. So we tried to cover everything in here, from making sure, for instance, that, you know, a lot of times in these agreements, somebody will have to come back to a location and reshoot because they didn't get the scene right. My understanding is Noise isn't gonna be available after May 9 because of all the reconstruction, redevelopment. So we had to write in here that you pretty much have to get this done now, you're not gonna be able to come back later and reshoot here, barring some amazing turn of events.
They were okay with that, knowing that they wouldn't be able to come back and retake?
Yeah, this, I mean, no offense to the producer, but this is not, seems to be a terribly high-budget production, so coming back to St. Joe and bringing actors and everyone in to reshoot's probably not in their budget either. So I think they're gonna focus on getting it right the first time. But I'm, I'm pretty comfortable that, based on the other agreements we were able to find and, and the, the service we use, that this is, this covers the bases.
What kind of liability does the school district assume?
Uh, we actually wrote into this that they do have to provide insurance, proof of insurance before they come in, and that they, Section 7, they indemnify us if there's any harm. They're pretty much responsible for the location, obviously, you know, we're providing the building, but, for instance, if they're gonna use people in this, it's up to them to get releases from people. We also included something in here where they are to give the school district credit in, in the movie for the use of the facility, and to express their appreciation to the school district for it. So I think, I think we've pretty much covered all the liability issues as best we can. They're coming in, it's their building for that, those days, they're there, and they're responsible for what happens there.
So what if they do damage to our building? They have to have the insurance to cover all of that?
Yeah.
Did you give them a certain amount of coverage that they?
Uh, I think $500,000 per occurrence for personal injury, property damage, or other losses.
And have we seen that, since it's only a couple weeks away?
Yeah.
Does it seem to be insurance?
No, I've not. Obviously, whenever they, if we sign the agreement, if it gets approved, we're gonna have them, we want them to provide that, that proof of insurance before they come in.
And you want approval so that you can sign the contract, Dr. Newhart?
Either way, it is a consent agenda item. With Brad not here, it would be falling to the, to the board president or vice president anyway.
It's, it's set up for Brad's signature, but if you wanna designate someone else to sign, you can auth, the board can authorize anyone it wants to sign the agreement, if it approves it.
I have one last question.
Sure.
Is Robert Redford or Tatum O'Neal in this?
You'll, you'll have a lot of people around, you'll have a lot of people around the school if that's the case. I'm sure that they'll, they'll come in under the radar if they're gonna show up.
They are having a casting call for local actors in the production, and we encourage them to go through Rubeau New Resident Theater Performing Arts Association, as well as the High School Theater Department will be able to go and watch the actual film take place. So we'll have a very active role with our students in this production.
So it's kinda like on-the-job training for the kids?
Yeah, yeah.
That'd be really awesome for them.
We can get Brad's signature on this, even though he's not here tonight, so.
I just saw that in the remarks.
Right.
That's why I just wanted to clarify.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Mr. Hatley. 3.9.
Chris?
Okay, so you should have an attachment, excuse me, showing the price quotes from January 21st going through March 16th. You can't really see on your attachment the color, but I have a, a copy that I can, we can pass around if you'd like, that shows that we did take the low bid on each of these responses. So if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Chris, there's just been two bidders for a long time. Is there any potential for getting more?
I believe, I know the business office is looking into trying to expand that. Roy, have you been involved in that at all?
I have, and currently, the pool that I'm bidding on for the Apple Bus contract has five bidders. They don't always come in through with a quote, but they're, they are current, connected, sometimes based on market conditions, especially when we're in a 70/30 winter mix, which we're just coming out of. Sometimes that product isn't immediately available for all distribution hubs, so, but generally, I get three to four bids every time I take it to market. And once, now that we've got some of these guys solidified and, and as players and so forth, my intent is to go over and help with Chris, possibly turn this into a combined annual fuel contract, and that's what we're working on right now. So I've got dialogue going with at least two vendors right now. We're working on a formula with an agreed base, and we're going backwards in time and saying, okay, had we bid on this formula contract, what would we have paid?
I would love to see the savings if that occurs.
It's, it'll be noticeable, whether it's gonna be substantial, that will be more in the aggregate, but we will, but nine chances out of 10, or nine buys out of 10, we will save on these formulas. I just wanna make sure that when we, it's time to bring data to you, that it's qualified, and the goal is to get to that point before July 1st.
Excellent.
And so we can turn that into an annual fuel buy contract for off-road diesel, on-road diesel for Apple contract, regular gasoline, et cetera, et cetera.
Any other questions? Chris, how much, have you done any kinda study to see how much money we save this, this year over last with the lower gas prices, lower fuel prices?
No, we could, we could find that out, though.
Just curious.
Definitely do, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, sir.
Tim McKay, E-rate contracts?
If you recall, I brought to you guys, probably July or August of this year, we went out for our E-rate bids. You have to put those out for at least the 12 months in advance for next year. And that's all funded through the government, through USAC. That's that little, you see all those little taxes on your cell phone bill, that's what all that tax money is going to, is for improvements in libraries and schools, and so we take advantage of that. Last year and this year has been a very good year for the amount of money that was available to schools. So this year, we tried to apply for that as quickly as possible. And all those bids have come back and gone through the evaluation process, and these, the contracts that you guys see there are, there's four contracts, three of those are for category two, and one is for the, the telephone service, which is category one, which is being phased out over the next two years, so that'll come to a full expense for the school district.
Yeah, Tim, maybe I've missed it, but where's the overall plan for the district? How do we know how this lays in with the requirements for the district on the networking, and where existing fiber runs between the buildings? Where's the overall plan? This just looks like a bid to put a bunch of Cat 6 cable in, and, I mean, maybe you've looked at, I, I haven't seen anything on it. Do we have anything? Do we have the overall plan laid out? Do we know?
We don't, because we put, we're kinda putting the, the cart before the horse, unfortunately, with the, the technology assessment that we did. Because of the funding mechanisms and how this worked with USAC, it's 12 months out. If I would've, you know, known 12 months ago, we could've done something a little differently. What I did, basically, when I, when I put this stuff together, I worked with the Aruba representative, the Extreme representative, and, and the cabling was kinda done in-house with our, our cabling guy. And what we did?
Who's that?
Darrell.
And what's his background?
He is our low voltage communication guy, he does our phones and cabling and.
So he laid out the new network for the whole district?
No, no, he did not. We just, we tried to pick the items that we would need for the bid.
I'm just trying to get my arms right, cause it's a lot of money. This is just one piece, I mean, there's a lot of money here, and for a district of 11,000 students and 120 million bucks, we oughta lay it out and do it right, no matter what the timeframe is.
That, the, the dollar amounts you see there, we will only pay 25% of that dollar amount. 75% is funded by USAC.
The next one has four, $500,000 on it, so.
No, it's, it's about 200 and, $239, $239,582.25.
Yeah, still, my concern is, is that, are we laying this out right? Can we see what we're doing? Have we evaluated the fiber runs between the buildings and what we really need? Do we, what have we done?
And, and I kinda, I kinda did that, I'll, I'll be honest. What we did, we took the amount of access points that we needed in, in the district, and the way the funding works, you're, you're only eligible for the schools that have students in it. So like, for instance, the downtown office, TMC, Webster, Colgan Center, those are not eligible for that funding mechanism. So we basically just took the amount of access points that are in the schools now, and that's how we came up with that amount of 870. That, that Aruba equipment is going on six years this next school year. So we, we sat down with Aruba, evaluated what we had, they gave us the part numbers with what was available going into, to current, you know, of this year that was available to purchase. So that's. So, that's how we kind of put this together. In the same way with switches, we tried to match the switches that would work with those access points for the, the best throughput and ability, because you, with the new access points, it requires two cables per, per pool for the APs to run at their maximum capacity. And that's how we came up with the cabling runs. As far as the cabling project, are we the latest, greatest with the cabling? No, but that would have blown our budget, because the cabling is about 30% more for the 6A plus versus the 6E, unfortunately.
My concern is, is on the consent agenda for the regular board possession, and I'd just pull it until we have a chance for you guys to present to us exactly what you're doing. Even though we're only going to pay a portion of this money, it's still a lot of money.
Let me, let me verify something there on a question. Is this the first wave of the 16 E-rate cycle?
Actually, this, yes, yes, but...
Okay. We, we would have time, Tim, to pull it to get on a second or third wave.
April 29th is the ending for this year's funding mechanism, so we would have to, we would lose that funding money. We would have to try for next year and hope that we would get any money. That's one of those things, you just don't know what's going to be available.
Well, well, the concern I have is spending any type of money on potentially something that if we're going to do a, a complete RFP, which has gone out, on a complete infrastructure review, if this is, I mean, is this what we need?
Yeah, that would, I guess, would be...
I feel like we do have the cart before the horse there.
We do, we do, right. And I did the best of my ability to try and distinguish what needs we needed and to fit within that budget.
You, you do have some meetings coming up on that infrastructure RFP review, right?
Tomorrow night, 3:30, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I, I would agree that we, we pull this off the, off the consent agenda completely and bring it back on April 25th.
Okay. From my understanding, the contracts have to be into USAC by April 15th, so if we don't have...
Again, if I'm understanding it correct, too, that's just for the first wave, though. There's additional waves that come through the E-rate grant.
I'll have to check into that, because I am, that I'm not sure.
Okay, if there's a need, potentially, we can address it even, potentially on the 13th.
Yeah.
But we, we need to take a deeper look into this and see how this meets any long-term strategic infrastructure.
Sure.
Okay.
The point is, is not to cut, it's to do what we need to do. If we, takes more than this, it takes more than this, but I'm not an IT expert, but I am used to seeing well-laid-out plans put in front of me that says, here's what we're doing, we're connecting A to B, here's why we're doing it, and here's the cost of it, and that's not what this does.
Yeah.
This just says, give me money.
Yep. These are, these were just the contracts, yes, I, I agree.
All right. 3.11.
Additional pay rates, Amy?
On the current additional pay rate schedule that we have approved for this year, right now, we have listed assistant baseball coach, assistant track coach that receive a $1,000 pay rate. It's not an hourly rate, that's a stipend bonus amount that they receive. These are coaches that are in addition to what we have based on the numbers and/or sections of, of the, the teams that we have. Right now, on the pay rate schedule, we have baseball and track specifically listed. But what we now have developed is a need at Central High School for both golf and tennis, which aren't in the pay rate schedule currently. So, what you have is additional pay rate, what I'm suggesting is to take out, there are two additional pay rates currently listed, they're specific to those two sports, and then apply the additional coach or assistant coach position in place of that. So, as we have these needs come up, we can evaluate those needs and determine if we need additional assistance in those areas. So, what you have is a situation, I'll just use the example in the golfing piece, where you have them golfing on different courses, and we don't have enough supervision to be able to monitor all of our students and all of our athletes on those different courses. And so, they, there are some courses that won't allow them to play if there is no supervision. This would allow that. Yes?
I volunteer.
Okay.
So, Amy, I have a question about this.
Sure.
The current extra-duty salary schedule has assistant coach pay for the category that includes golf and tennis. So, why is, are you proposing an additional rate that's separate from the assistant coach pay that's listed already?
This would not be in addition to that rate. This would be additional assistance beyond...
Beyond one assistant?
Beyond the primary assistant, yes. Yes. So, what you could have is, you, you may have a, your head coach, an assistant coach, but there still may be an additional need for other supervision in areas.
So, we already have an assistant tennis coach and an assistant golf coach?
I'm going to have to...
We, we don't.
I thought that was the case, that we did not.
We don't right now. For like golf, like you said, sometimes varsity will play one course and JV plays another, so they've got to have that supervision. And a lot of times, like, it may be after the rise of seasons started, all of a sudden, we have a lot more kids that came out than we did. Like, like middle school track.
You have to be consistent with that.
Right. And so, this, this is the way, I guess, instead of...
Why are you not just paying the assistant coach rate? Why would you have this other amount? Why muddy the waters? Why not use what we already have?
If I may help answer that, that was asked in a meeting that we had here prior to spring break. At this particular point in time, instead of bringing somebody in and paying a full additional amount for an assistant coach, we felt it best to pay just an additional pay rate amount. Plus, you could have in other circumstances where, particularly with potentially even freshman or sophomore teams, or with the number of kids they have out in golf and tennis, that you could have a varsity coach gone someplace, an assistant coach gone someplace, and an assistant back here watching practice with all the other kids.
Okay, so, you're saying that somebody would be doing an assistant coach job, just like the other assistant coach jobs, but they shouldn't be paid the same amount?
We were looking at supervising capacity. What we're really trying to cover at this particular point, this year, this season right now, in the spring of '16, to cover the, the meets and games, we felt that this was the least expensive way to go to get it supervised.
Sure. It looks like, you know, we're halfway through the season, maybe even a little more.
Correct.
I understand what you're saying. But I think we have to be very specific when we're adding an additional pay rate. When you have something on there, like this one says, it makes it look like an assistant coach is that amount. It's going to be very confusing when we go to assign people to things. We need to, it needs to be very specific that it's not an assistant coach additional pay rate, but something else, I think.
Should it be named something else? Is that what you're saying?
I think it should be named something else, yes. I don't know what you want to call it, but an assistant coach ought to be paid what an assistant coach gets. And if you want to pay a portion because they haven't spent the whole season, fine, but I don't think you should just throw an assistant coach additional pay rate on there. It's going to get all messed up in the future when people are getting paid.
How do we do this last year? I mean, how were they paid in previous years?
That's what I've been saying. What we've had in... Yeah, and I don't think we've had it for the golf or tennis before, we haven't had that need. But specifically, there are pay rates currently listed on the additional pay rates for the baseball and the track, so they would have, that would have applied to them.
Wasn't that for middle school?
The track is for middle school.
Yes. I believe there are some additional pay rates for middle school, because we don't necessarily need assistant coaches for middle schools.
It's high school. Middle school's on the second page.
More questions, comments?
There's a middle school assistant coach on there, too.
It is on consent agenda, yes.
I agree, I think we need more clarification and discussion.
We want to pay these people, for sure, but I, I think we need, we spend a lot of time in the ad hoc committee fairing up the way that we do extra-duty pay for coaches so that everybody is paid in, in a good system with each other. So, I don't want to start throwing out these other ones and get it all messed up like we worked so hard to get consolidated in. So, that's all I'm saying. I don't want to, I want to pay people that are doing their thing, absolutely, but I just want to make sure we get it.
Well, currently, what we're trying to do now is just to fill a need for supervision.
Not coaching.
Not, correct.
Well, then, they're not coaches.
It shouldn't say assistant coaches, is what she's saying.
We just need to call it something else. Athletic supervisor, no.
Amy can think of something. She's a HR person.
Yeah. You've got a big old list of them, don't you?
Is that, is that able to do here for this evening?
Saurus.
To change that name for this evening?
Yeah.
And I would recommend that we...
So, we can have a discussion to change it, that'd be fine.
And then, we recommend to pull it off and place it in, it'd actually be new business in an action item.
For tonight?
Or we can place it in the, for tonight, because we do, we do have a need, that's why we're bringing it to you here now. Really, then, it probably needs to be placed under Personnel and Finance Report for additional pay rates, item 7.5.
Be creative and you may...
I think that we ought to look at that additional pay rate they were talking about that's on there for other assistant coaches, too. I mean, not necessarily for tonight, but that needs to be get cleaned up.
Mr. Sneeden?
Yes. We need to get the athletic directors and the coaches to come up with a, a better plan of scheduling, not schedule your varsity, JV, and freshman in three different places on the same day. And then, perhaps, I know a lot of parents would come and watch their kids play, could, could they not supervise some of this stuff? I mean, if we need, if you need an adult body there, I mean, don't, don't we have a plan for like football if they want to volunteer?
We do have some volunteer coaches. I know the football team at Central has a couple volunteers that don't get paid, so there must be some kind of provision for something like that.
The shortage of chaperones or supervisors is, is, what I'm hearing is the scheduling of different places. Maybe we need to look at that, make sure we don't have a hole in the program, and look at, look at the volunteer coaches first. And yeah, if we have to pay somebody, it's necessary, fine, but we need, we need to see a better plan of what we're even talking about as soon as possible, because this season's going now. But perhaps a little better scheduling would help.
But, but this issue right now is for this, this season? This, this season only? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Amy. ROTC 3.12.
Go ahead, Amy.
Okay. I had a discussion in a meeting with Major Burns, who brought forward the federal minimum monthly pay that has increased, and this increase is effective January 1st of this year. And so, what you have in front of you is a list of the increase per individual. These are the current individuals that are employed through ROTC, and what they're per month, and then the total per year increase would be. It's about a 1% increase per person, based on the federal, federal minimum pay requirements. And so, we're bringing this forward for approval. Right now, we are receiving the reimbursement at this level from the Army, and we are seeking approval to get these pay increases approved based on the, the federal minimum.
And since this is from January 1, do we have retroactively?
We would retro that back to January 1st, correct.
I have a question. So, you said this is increases for ROTC, Stan?
Correct, increases to base pay.
So, how does this, how does this coincide with, first off, how much money did they lose by us going from 12-month to 10-and-a-half-month for ROTC?
They lost money through that. They also lost money through, there were two other things that they were being paid for. They were being paid for mileage, they still were receiving mileage stipends. Those went away, they'd be reimbursed like anyone else for mileage going forward, and then they received longevity, which was taken away from everyone previously, so that was removed as well. So, it depends on the individual and whether, what they, amounts that they were receiving, but they did decrease from the amount of contract days plus longevity plus the mileage that was taken away from these individuals. Yes?
What the sentence says, 50% of these increases, reimbursement for 50% of these increases is effective as of January 1. I thought it was all. That says half.
I'm sorry?
It says 50% of these increases were being reimbursed as of January 1. I thought you said it was all.
50% is reimbursed by the Army to us. It's not 100% reimbursed.
It's not 100%, it's 50%.
About 50%.
Okay.
Martin, those days, correct me, were reduced, Amy, on ROTC from 12-month, from 260-day calendar to 211-day.
Correct.
Correct? I stand corrected on that?
So, Amy, I just want to make sure I understand on Eric's point here of the 50%, is the raise that we're looking for just the amount that the federal government is already sending?
That's correct.
Or more from us in addition?
No, it's the, it's the minimum.
It's just the amount they're already sending us.
Correct.
Thank you.
So, my question again, the 55 days in, is that about right, 50, 45 days?
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine days that they're losing for, for changing in the calendar? Could you get me a, a printout on how much money each one of these gentlemen are losing in, in that, from that?
Yes, I can.
So, with the mileage, though, they still get reimbursed for mileage, they just have to fill out this stuff, right?
Correct. So, the longevity, they would be losing, and then the contract days, they would be losing, and the mileage would go to a reimbursement.
If you could get us those figures, that would be great.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
You want that on a, I'm sorry, you want that on a per-person basis?
Yes, please.
Overall, okay.
But this is, what you're approving tonight in consent agenda is for this...
To give them their money.
...money to be given retroactively.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Been moved in second, then. Ms. Bruceman?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Mr. Bruder?
Yes.
Ms. Danforth?
Yes.
Mr. Sneeden?
Yes.
Mr. Haggard?
Yes.
Myself, yes.
And we'll reconvene at 7:00 PM.